Wait for Diane to sit. Good evening, welcome to the March 4th, 2015 Board of Education meeting. We've been in an executive session since 6:00 PM to discuss an individual personnel matter and pending litigation for the district. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any participation in government students here tonight? Okay, your requirement is that you stay till 9:00 o'clock. If the meeting is still going on at 9:00, you'll need to come up and there'll be sign-out sheets around the table here, and if you have any forms that need to be signed, one of the board members can do that for you. If you're lucky, we may end before 9:00 and do the same process, come in and sign out at that time. Introductions?
Christine Bev, Diane Stever.
Lynn Lundhart.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Wood Singar.
Joanne Cunningham.
Michael Cooper.
And Judy Keel.
Approval of the minutes, the minutes of the February 25th, 2015 regular board meeting. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Student Senate report. Do we have a representative from the Student Senate here this evening with us? No?
Oh, that's unusual.
Yeah.
They may come in later.
Yeah, there might be an event going on that they're attending themselves. That brings us to the Superintendent's report. Dr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you President Downey, and that actually works out well because one of my first announcements to the board is obviously there's National Grid Zoning Board of Appeals meeting tonight at the Town Hall, which has just started simultaneously with our board meeting, so I'm going to apologize to the board but to represent the board as well as the district, take Mr. Nolte with us to go down and talk at the ZBA to find out a little bit more. So that the public understands, we have extended for a second time an opportunity for National Grid to present to the Board of Education. They have indicated that they would be willing to present to the board on March 18th, which will be a lengthy meeting and depending on the crowd, we may have to consider moving it, but that would probably come after our instructional program presentation for budget that night. So if you can mark your calendars for March 18th, that would be appreciated as long as they indicated, the caveat is that the zoning board of appeals would not be making any additional action on that night for their next meeting. And that's one of the things I'll talk with the zoning board of appeals tonight, is to ask them to allow that that presentation takes place before any formal action by the town in regards to their request for a variance, so I hope that's what the board would like, and then we'll see where it goes. On a brighter side, this past weekend, I had an opportunity with my family to go up to Shenandoah, I say that reluctantly, but that's where the competition is held for Odyssey of the Mines and, you know, on Saturday, February 28th, six teams from Bethlehem Central participated in the Region 7 Odyssey of the Mines competition. The competition was tough, but each and every team did a great job. Four of our B.C. teams placed first place in their divisions and their problems. The four first-place teams from Hammergrill Elementary and Bethlehem Central Middle School will now compete at the New York State Odyssey competition on April 11th at Binghamton University, so we wish them well and support them as they go through this endeavor, which is heavily parent-involved and student-participation-driven, and they've really represented the district well, and we're going to see if we can do some financial support as they add on to their reputation, and hopefully, one, if not all of them, potentially qualify for the next level, which would be the Worlds competition. I think three years ago, we had one team go to the Worlds, and it's quite the expense, but it's also quite the honor, and I know these teams, as well as the coaches, are some of the individuals from those teams, and they're looking to try to duplicate that feat. So, in general, I'll try to keep that short, just because I know we have the budget presentation on athletics, as well as special education, as we start some of our education programs, so I'll leave that to the board, and Jody, I'm sure, will have any comments as we address any questions or concerns from the public.
Thank you, Dr. Douglas. Next is the Board of Ed- Thank you. Next, the Board of Education report. Anyone like to start?
Thursday.
Actually, before someone else starts, can I just ask, Mr. Nealon, can you make sure these, these seem to be fading in and out, at least to me, maybe it's just my ears, but could you just check, make sure these two ones are working? Thank you.
I had the opportunity, I believe it was Thursday evening, to participate in the BOU Spelling Bee, their big fundraiser. It was a lot of fun, it was a great turnout, and we didn't win, unfortunately, but it was a very nice event and well-attended, so I'm glad they raised a lot of funds.
I would have liked to have been there, except that I ended up going to a rally at Colony Central High School. A lot of the staff were there in support of, you know, supporting our schools, and I would say there were probably close to 1,000 people there, and it was a little different format from past rallies, and the actual representatives, our assembly people, and representatives of the senate staff members from the region were up on the stage, and they were really forced to listen, they were actually forced to watch the audience and how the audience was participating, and actually listened to what people were saying and respond. So I thought, actually, it was a very, very good evening. Do you want me to go on?
Yeah.
I just have just a couple of other things, at least coming up. On Friday, the Bethlehem Central Community Foundation is sponsoring March Madness. If you went last year, it was really a great event. This raises money for the foundation, especially to use towards innovative grants for teachers that, you know, we can't really support in the budget, and this way, they can do some interesting things, both in the schools and in the classrooms. So it's a fun evening, it's in the high school, the lower gym. I think it begins at 6:30?
The Wacky Olympics begin, I think, at 5:00?
Oh, the Wacky Olympics begin at 5:30? Okay, sorry about that. The Wacky Olympics part start at 5:30.
Yeah, 5:30.
5:30. So, anybody in the community is welcome to attend, and there's, from NISBA, there's a Capitol Conference on March 15th and 16th, you know, this is for the board, so if you can, it starts Sunday afternoon into Monday, and I know that there are appointments with Assemblywoman Fahy and Senator Breslin on Monday, if anybody can attend those two, so it would be great. And lastly, there's a complimentary webinar from NISBA on solar, use of solar in schools. It's on Wednesday, March 18th, 12:00 to 1:30. I know Greg left, but I mean, I would think that that might be something that-
Is that the last meeting he was-
Yeah, that he was going to listen to it, but I just, you know, just want, actually, anybody here, if they're interested, could watch it too, because it is complimentary for NISBA board members.
Is that going to be, like, where you could sign on after the webinar, still view it, or?
Well, you probably can register, and then you'd get a copy of it.
Okay.
I think that's how that works.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
You asked, I will be able to make the meeting with Assemblywoman Fahy, but not with Senator Breslin, so I will, and I'd email that to, I think, Ms. Barrett, so.
And I may be able to do opposite.
Oh, good.
Senator Breslin.
That's great, because I have a set of appointments already, the setup kind of for me, and, which doesn't include, you know, those two individuals. I know I did talk to Assemblywoman Fahy at length last Thursday night at Colony High School, and so, you know, I feel pretty good about that, and so, so at least if one or two people are there at each, I think that's, that's good.
I notified Dr. Douglas's office that I would be able to attend both.
Okay.
And I can do both, too. I didn't let Brittany know, but I will.
And then, for the board, I know we've worked on an outlet piece, I think we've made final comments, everybody's okay with that, to proceed forward with that?
Yeah, what are the next steps with that?
I guess, Joelle, when you'll reach out to get it published in the Times Union Press?
Well, my sense is, we would send the final copy to Tom, who would then work through Joelle. Once we do the copy, I don't think it goes to the district.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there were minor things, did we, I mean, can they just make those, because it was right in the body of the, I mean, it was just a couple of comments that were-
He hasn't gone to the-
No, no, it hasn't gone to the T U, but-
No, but Tom was C.C. on those, right?
Yeah, yeah, Tom was on those emails, so.
Yep, so we'll tell Tom to incorporate, have you incorporate those changes, the last changes we made, and proceed with getting it published.
Yeah, I think just to make sure that doesn't fall through the cracks, so the plan is, Joelle and Brittany are communicating to Tom that he does all the corrections, or someone over there does the correction. We don't have nothing else to do with this, as long as we're clarifying, right? You got it, make sure, okay, thank you.
Communications will coordinate it.
And hopefully, it will get printed.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And then, yeah, be positive. And this evening, I got a letter from Dr. Douglas and Ms. Monroe, they're going to be establishing a STEM Advisory Committee, and they're looking for a board member, and I would imagine, maybe if we wanted even two board members to participate in that. I'll pass the letter around, and anyone who would like to, let me know. Anyone else?
Well, last meeting, I made a big deal about all the success stories in the winter sports and girls' basketballs, still winning.
Still going, tomorrow night at 6:00?
Tomorrow night.
Colton Valley at 6:00.
Right, right, so good for them.
And then Tuesday at the time, June.
Yep, and the boys did do very well.
Oh, you're optimistic. Who are they by tomorrow? Yes, I am. Colony.
Right, I'm sure, we didn't steal your thunder or anything.
Okay, next up is the presentation, we'll have the 2015-16 budget presentations, we have two this evening, athletics, and then special education and student services, so.
Can I just remind people, both for presenters and anyone who speaks from the audience, to speak directly into the microphones, please? Thank you.
Adjusting mic now. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we're going to give you your quick recap of what we had covered at our previous meetings, before we turn it over to Lynn Keys for athletics, and Kathy Johnston to cover special ed services. We rolled out our baseline, showing relatively flat revenues. Revenue total of 91.7 does not include any increases in taxes, it does not include any increases in state aid, nor any use of fund balance. That compared to our expenditures within the baseline budget of 93.6 million is giving us a preliminary gap of $1.9 million. We're collecting information as we go through these coming weeks, so once we have an indication of what we'll, what we can expect in our state aid, that'll allow us to answer those questions on the revenue side, and allow us ultimately to get to a balanced budget. This chart is one that we're going to include as we go through each of these weeks, where we can give you a quick recap of what impacts are there on this preliminary gap, based on the proposed additions that we've talked about in each of the weekly presentations. For transportation, there were a number of equipment requests, training requests, those totaled up to possibly $100,000, if resources would allow, and if the board is willing to approve that. For operations and maintenance, they had more modest requests, that was to restore a custodian with salaries and fringes, and some minor equipment requests as well, that was about $50,000. Technology is looking to advance the work that's been done over the last few years. We have more and more users of technology throughout the district, so the request would be to increase funding by $300,000, if available. That would boost the gap up to possibly just under $2.4 million. We did talk about some longer-term adds for both operations and maintenance and for transportation. We spoke about the turf management needs, as we complete the work on the fields in the coming year. We are going to need to invest some additional money into maintaining that going forward, and we also talked about expanding the telemetry units on our bus fleet over time as well. We do not have figures on that yet, so that is not included in those totals. With that gap at just under $2.4 million, you can see we have some of the tools noted below. If we can go up to the 2.02 percent maximum allowable tax levy limit, that's just under $1.3 million. If we had full restoration on the GEA, that would be $3.1 million, so you can see that really is making a big dent in that preliminary gap, and of course, we always have some ability to use our fund balance from surpluses from prior years that can help cover that funding. Transportation budget, there was a common theme in many of the budgets, where our totals were relatively flat. If you wish to have additional details about this, if you happen to miss that meeting, all of these presentations are on the web, and you can see additional breakouts on position information and other associated requests. So I'm just going to go through these quickly. The bus replacement proposition was discussed at the last meeting, it's a recommendation that the board consider replacing eight large and two small buses for just over $1 million. Decision is not required tonight, but we do need to have a decision by the meeting on March 18th, because that's the date that we have to adopt the legal ad, which then must be published in accordance with the statutory timeframe. O and M had a slight decrease in their budget. It would have been down even further, had we not come through that periodic requirement where we have to go for the building condition survey and our five-year plan updates, so about $47,000 in that budget covers those infrequent but required elements. We also talked about the capital outlay for 15-16. We're proposing a third phase of work on the high school pool, and this is something that is fully eligible for building aid, once we go through the approval at SED, and we've made a nice dent in upgrading that facility over the last two years. We're in the midst of Phase 2 right now, that will be on the agenda later on in the meeting, and this last piece would just be for some more of the finish upgrades on the interior of the pool. Technology, that increase, as we talked about last week, is primarily because of a reserve for some BOSI's funding. We were very conservative in those estimates, and we do have some money in there that we might choose to allocate towards additional equipment purchases. That's something that, again, once we have some more known figures on the revenue side, we can make those final decisions. So that is your quick, I probably didn't do it in 60 seconds, but your brief recap of the prior meetings, and at this point, I will turn it over to Lynn Keys, our Athletic Director to cover his budget request.
And yes, I'm going to have to fix the microphone. Mr. Landry, I'll chuck a little bit.
Good evening, everybody, and I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. As Ms. Cunningham said, you know, the athletic program continues to have just an outstanding year in every aspect, on the field and on the court and in the pool, accomplishments are coming regularly. Probably most gratifying is that every single varsity team in the fall was a scholar-athlete team, achieving averages of over 90 and being cited by New York State Public High School Athletic Association. We've had numerous student athletes signing letters of intent for Division 1 and 2 colleges and many others committing to Division 3 colleges. The level of support that I've seen in the last year, since I arrived at Bethlehem, has been incredible. I'm a fairly longtime athletic director, I've never been an athletic director at a school district that has the kind of support from students, from parents, as well as from a district and a board of education, as we have here. So it's truly something that for, I know we have some of our student athletes here in the back, very lucky, and I'm lucky as an athletic director. So what I'm about to present to you is just to give you an oversight of our athletic program here at Bethlehem Central. It's extensive, it's a large program. We compete in the suburban council, which many of you, if you've been following the local news, has grown. We've added four different schools, Troy, Schenectady, Albany, and Christian Brothers Academy, so the level of play that your sons and daughters will be facing is going to be increased in many of the sports, and we look forward to having the arrival of our new members and help them develop their programs as well. Here at Bethlehem, we do have four different levels of athletics, and this is called inter-scholastic athletics. Modified athletics is 7th and 8th graders, it's your middle schoolers, and it's really, as it says, your first exposure. If you think about it, it's like inter-scholastic athletics 101, where teaching student athletes how to prioritize their time, how to make a commitment to their teams and to their teammates, to a program, and basically, everyone participates in playing time and contests. The wonderful part is, students are first taught beginnings of some strength and conditioning programs, and that's becoming more of a featured aspect of our athletic program as well, and we are going to try to start that more and more at the foundational level, at the modified level. So again, everyone who is on a roster, who comes to practice every day, who works hard, is going to get playing time. Again, not every single minute, you know, equal, but playing time, and it's very, very important. It definitely goes hand-in-hand with the middle school philosophy of physical growth, psychological growth, social growth, and this is just an extension of the classroom here at the middle school. The next level would be our freshman and junior varsity. Again, obviously, the freshman level is typically made up of freshmen, however, often and depending on the program, you may have selectively classified athletes, which are student athletes in grades 7 and 8, who have gone through the New York State Ed Department's rigorous process of being classified, trying out and making a team, and of course, freshmen and sophomores. And here, at this point, we're looking at student athletes who definitely show athletic skill to quite a high level. They have the potential to, with continued growth and commitment, to be varsity athletes and to represent Bethlehem at the highest level of high school athletics. Equal playing time is never guaranteed, it's not a requirement, and this is the first stage is where we start to see separation, and student athletes who are learning roles, accepting roles, embracing roles, as to what they bring to their, to their program. Of course, if a student athlete is somebody who has a specific role, is a freshman or junior varsity member, that certainly does not mean by the time they ascend to the varsity level, that they won't be a starter, that they won't be an impact athlete. So we're looking for student athletes who are very committed, who are looking to grow within the program, who are looking to put in the effort and the work, and it's probably no surprise to anybody here, our athletes tend to be our best students, who tend to be our musicians, who tend to be, you know, all those students who are active in student government, it's the same type of child, and as we go through the presentation, you'll see how many student athletes we actually have participating here at Bethlehem. It's pretty extraordinary. The varsity level, again, made up of upperclassmen, by and large. Are there exceptions? Absolutely. The varsity level is for the highest skilled athletes, and again, it depends on the program, it depends on the sport. Playing time is never guaranteed. Again, at this point now, student athletes have identified individual roles, and that's incumbent on the varsity head coach and the coaching staff to identify that role early on in the season, let our student athletes know through the process, this is something you do particularly well, we need that, and these are the things that, if you can just elevate a little bit, you know, we can get you into those situations. So constant communication, and striving for victory is a worthy goal. You see more and more, just turn on the local news every single night, and you'll see footage of our games. I would love to see more of our sports being, you know, followed by the local media, but I think, you know, I think in time, it'll get there. High school athletics is obviously a very, very important part of our school cultures here, and whether you're on Twitter, you see the local news, the radio, more and more media outlets are spending time and money to cover it. So, again, at the end of the day, the final score in a varsity match or meet or invitational is more and more being displayed. Before you, you see our athletics budget overview, and clearly, you see the largest expense to the program is staying constant, which is the cost of coaches and chaperones, supervision at our various games. Equipment is staying even as well. Other professional services incorporates many different areas, which I will break down a little bit further into the presentation. And then other supplies, and of course, supplies are the consumable items that we use to field our athletic program, which, again, is quite a large program with many teams, and over the years, we've had to tighten the belt, so to speak. We have had to kind of draw the line with coaches when they do come, asking for certain items, and of course, we've had tremendous support from our many booster clubs. Again, this does not, by any stretch of the imagination, tell you the entire cost of the athletic program to run. There are many items here that are due to accounting rules, I guess, or state guidelines that are under other budget codes, such as salary for myself, my administrative assistant, our fields, you know, the gentlemen who work our fields, who work under Mr. Nolte's supervision in operations, as well as our transportation department, who oversees our bus drivers that take us, all to, all the many, many contests. You would be amazed if you printed out a schedule, an annual schedule, which of course, with weather, will change many, 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 many times, especially what we're looking at here in the spring coming up, hundreds upon hundreds of contests that our student athletes are participating in. And of course, again, this year, our booster club generated a total of $128,600 worth of donations to the school district. That's an incredible amount of support by our booster clubs. Last year was roughly about the same, it was about $131,000, and those, all those pieces allow us to run a full program. As we look ahead now to 15-16, and we see that increase to $601,850, and that was from the 595-891. You see, again, the largest area, of course, as you saw, was coaching salary stipends, and of course, the supervision, the chaperones, other professional services, our supplies and equipment, and again, the supplies, other supplies is not only, by the way, consumables, but also fees, invitational fees, tournament fees, our wrestling, cheerleading, track and field, so all those types of fees that go into it, as well as the state and the section, and of course, equipment. So, the famous other professional services that you've seen now in the last couple of slides, what the heck does that make up? Well, what you see here, starting at the top, are our officials' fees, those are our referees, those are our officials, our judges, that manage and are the officials of the contests that our student athletes participate in. You see our athletic trainer services, and we are extraordinarily blessed to have the athletic trainer that we have. We have, in my mind, probably one of the top two athletic trainers in the suburban council. He is outstanding, and that is his stipend. Our ice rental fees are $20,000, and those currently have been donated by the Ice Hockey Booster Club, very generously, as ice hockey is extraordinarily expensive. Our entry fees, again, into a variety of tournaments, invitationals, our lifeguarding fees, our security, which is our police supervision, again, some extra chaperones, and football equipment reconditioning. We are mandated each year to send out all the many football helmets that all our levels use. They need to be NOXY-approved, that's a word that, each of the helmets that we use has to have certain approvals, and they are put through a rigorous testing, and that's the cost for that. And then we get a list as to what number of helmets are rejected by the evaluator, and then, of course, those need to be purchased. Okay, so we talked about some of the fees, and to be part of the suburban council, part of Section 2, and New York State Public High School Athletic Association, we are charged fees, and the NISBA rate, as well as the Section 2 rate, are based on our district's enrollment. So depending on minor fluctuations or fluctuations, once students ascend to grade 9, that's when they do start to kick in, per pupil, that's what those numbers are based on. And then you see New York State Section 2, starting at the bottom, the suburban council, which is probably likely to increase slightly now with our four additional member schools, our New York State Public High School Athletic Association membership, as well as our computer software program known as Sports Pack, which is probably going to be going, getting a little bit more advanced, again, as we become more savvy technologically, just like as we talked about earlier this evening. So technology is something that we use every day. Melissa, my secretary in our office, again, with hundreds of contests and changes and referees, we depend on a quick, effective, and dependable scheduling system, and every member of the suburban council is currently using this. So you see where we're going, hopefully, and the types of things that we're looking at. I think it's important to see where we're currently at here in the past year. Of course, we still have a third of the sports season left, with spring starting on Monday, though, looking outside, you would never know, everyone's thrilled that it was 38 degrees today, and it's like 70 normally, you know, the same type of reaction. But as you look at our program, we have 15 girls' programs, 15 boys' programs, and we do have one coed program, which is our modified swim. We have 82 coaches, we have 14 volunteer coaches, and I do want to mention that each of those volunteer coaches must be certified by New York State Ed Department. They go through the very same rigorous types of training, courses, CPR, first aid, fingerprinting, Dignity for All Students Act training, it's- It's lengthy and quite costly, but every one of those volunteer coaches does have that very same certification as any other coach. You see, currently, we have 74 teams. And there's the breakdown, between fall with 32, winter 22, and spring with 20. And currently, this is grades seven through 12, that's our modified, our freshmen, our junior varsity and varsity athletes, we have 1,777 student athletes. So again, we are double A school, indicating that we are playing in the largest designation that the state has. And there's a variance between that. You have, on the very large end, school districts such as Shenandoah, Albany and Schenectady, now will be joining our conference, and we are probably one of the smaller double A schools in the section. And again, this is total team participation. So if a student is a multi-sport athlete, they would count twice. If they play three sports, they'd count three times towards that number. And here you see a breakdown of that in grades seven through 12. So of course, the vast majority of students are playing one sport. You do see a good number, a very, very average number. That's what you would expect to see, playing multi-sports. And then, of course, for those that really want to play something all year round, you have the three-sport athlete. And again, this just breaks it down by level. So as we mentioned, out of the total of 74 inter-scholastic athletic teams at Bethlehem, we currently have 30 varsity teams, 22 JV, 10 freshmen, and then our 12 modified programs. So now, as we look ahead to 15 and 16, we have had many discussions with our varsity head coaches. They have met with me individually, they have submitted budget request forms, and quite frankly, my coaches speak to me so frequently that I'm sure by the ends of their season, they're probably kind of done with me a little bit. But we do, we talk frequently, and you need to have that constant line of communication in order to know what their needs are. They know their programs better than anyone. And our varsity head coaches, if you haven't heard me say it, maybe at Meet the Coaches Night, or at Selective Classification Night last year at the middle school, we kind of made some changes in that process. Our varsity head coaches are the CEOs of his and her programs. Meaning, they, if you're the varsity head coach, absolutely, part of your job is coaching your varsity team. It's also to oversee your modified program, if you have one, your freshman program, if you have one, your junior varsity, in addition to just your varsity. That includes budgeting, that includes assisting on coaching staff recommendations and interviewing, that includes the philosophy and direction of a program. And through that communication with me, we then tailor a vision of what we are hoping that program will look like. And then along the way, we add other pieces, such as strength and conditioning now is something that more and more we want to implement. And it's kind of, that's kind of coming from the opposite end. That's something that I would like to see coaches utilize, and I'm helping them get that training, get that experience, and along with the support of the school district, and the board, and our superintendent, trying to get the proper equipment for our student athletes to be able to really participate in a quality strength and conditioning program. So here you see recommended reductions from the athletic program. The one reduction that I am recommending actually came through several conversations with our varsity head coach, Coach Leach. This is something that we actually discussed with our football booster club as well. And really, it's, it will strengthen our overall program. And often, when people hear, well, you're cutting a level, how is that going to strengthen our program? Well, in this case, it will. There were many days at practice where, JV practice, where we only had 15, 16 student athletes. The entire roster floated between 19 and 21, depending on each week, due to the level of injuries. If you only have that level of athletes on your team, you can't play a full scout team, as there is 11 on each side, so you couldn't have a full scout game. You also have the vast majority of athletes playing every single snap. Fortunately, though, we did have a couple of concussions and a couple of moderate injuries, fortunately, we didn't have the numbers that one might expect with such a lack of depth in such a physical game. So that's, we're very fortunate in that regard. This will absolutely fortify our junior varsity numbers tremendously, since we are, you know, hoping that this long-term planning will allow those ninth graders to start working out now. Our football program is in the weight room now, today. They lifted, they've been lifting. And that allows them to work closely with our junior varsity and varsity coaches. We're several months away from the start of the season, which of course, is mid-August. And this will allow them to see the training techniques used for the junior varsity and varsity. It is definitely different than freshmen. And this will give us the numbers that we believe will make our overall program healthier. When you make cuts, we often worry about, well, what about the student athletes that we're displacing? Fortunately, by the elimination of freshman football, no student athlete will be displaced. We will have a full seven through 12 presence, grades seven through 12 presence, in our football program. Our modified student athletes who want to play football, we have a great modified program that Coach Palmer runs, seventh and eighth grade. Our ninth and 10th graders, primarily, of course, there could be some subtle changes there, but primarily, our ninth and 10th graders will make up our junior varsity roster. And our 11th and 12th graders will primarily make up our varsity roster. I polled the suburban council, and there was only one school who has not, is not sure yet as to which direction they are going. But as it stood right now, there were half a dozen schools, it won't surprise you who the names are, they're the larger double A schools, the Shenandoahs, the Shakers, the Saratogas, the Gilderlands, Burn Hills, Balsin Lake, which while an A school, obviously has a very rich football history. And you look at the other side there, where we are going with a three-program model, and there are, the majority of schools are there. So in addition to potentially Bethlehem, you're looking at Albany, you're looking at Balsin Spa, April Park, Niskiuna, schools that are closer to us in size, and closer to us in football tradition, you know, over history, historically speaking. So really, this will fortify our program over time. And of course, we're excited about that. Coach Leach is very excited to be able to potentially give Coach Carlino at the JV level a larger portion, and give him some depth. Now, the elimination includes one coach's, one assistant coach's stipend, as one of the two coaches will join the junior varsity staff. So now, of course, with increased numbers, we'll now have three coaches, one head coach, and two assistants, working with what we're predicting to be probably in the neighborhood of 35 to 40 junior varsity players, rather than 17, 18. The other cost that would be a savings to the district would be the transportation to those freshman games, the officials' fees, the chaperone fees, the reconditioning of that level of helmets, which is quite costly, uniforms, supplies, you know, all those kinds of things that make up the cost of a program. So recommended reinstatements for the athletic program. And again, over the years, as budgets have been tightened, of course, we have had to follow that suit with the rest of the state. And when we looked at potentially putting items back into the budget, the first thing we wanted to look at, as a program and as a district, was to reinstate items that were taken out. Now, of course, as Ms. Keough said, we're waiting to see how much we're looking at. And of course, we'll have to, you know, at the end of it, balance it. But these are the items that would allow Bethlehem and allow our athletic program and the district to fully fund them. That would be the ice hockey rink rental fee, that you may remember, I had a couple of slides ago, is currently being reimbursed by our ice hockey boosters. Golf greens fees, our junior varsity and our varsity golfers, those greens fees are currently paid by our golf boosters. Our bowling lane usage fee of $3,000 has been generously donated for years by our coach, who owns Delmar Lanes. And of course, we want to fully fund our gymnastics program. Currently, our gymnastics program is contributing 50% of all the costs of the program, coaching stipends, transportation, invitational costs, uniforms, supplies, all those items. We are looking to reinstate one assistant coach for indoor track, and as you'll see on the coming slide, add an additional indoor assistant. So a couple of years ago, you folks should probably do better tell me, several years ago, we had lost those extra assistants. And over the last several years, our track and field boosters have been paying that, have been paying the full district stipend for those coaches. And eventually, that's a difficult piece to continue to uphold. So now, we are looking to reinstate those assistant positions for indoor track. We have three coaches per program for our spring track and field, and the numbers are pretty much mirror images. They are slightly up in the springtime, but you're talking only a handful of student athletes. The numbers are very, very large. If you've ever seen, and I know we have some track and field athletes, as well as parents in the audience, you've seen us come off the bus, I should say buses, at invitationals or meets. It's a large number. And that's what makes track and field such a unique, great sport here. We have obviously great success here at Bethlehem in our, both our girls' and our boys' track and field programs. And it's a unique piece. We have so many students of all different skill levels. The dedication that each puts in is remarkable, and we're very lucky to have the coaching staff that we do have. The next item that we would seek to have reinstated would be our fitness center. And back in the past, we had supervision of the fitness center. Well, we're looking to extend that. And again, as I've mentioned, strength and conditioning, more and more is being used to develop student athletes at the high school level and beyond. What you see there, that $12,000 would be Monday through Friday, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., it would be approximately 170 days of the school year. So it wouldn't start day one and end the last day, but it'd be obviously the great majority of those days. And we are looking to do several unique items. Our coaches are in the weight room with their teams. So as an example, if our boys' lacrosse program is going to be using the fitness center, one of the members of the boys' lacrosse coaching staff will be in the fitness center to not only monitor and evaluate and make sure that the proper workout routine is being utilized. In addition, we want to have that room open, now that we have so much wonderful cardio equipment, we have new squat and power racks, we have really a fully operable fitness center. And we want that open for students, whether it's a student athlete who's not in season, whether it's a student athlete who's, I'm sorry, a student who's not a student athlete, who just wants to work out. That additional supervision certainly assists with that. In addition, we are looking to have someone who has that experience and the qualifications to put together specialized programs for teams, such as if we're looking to do speed work. Speed work is a very unique aspect to athletic conditioning, and it puts student athletes at a huge advantage, and in a multitude of sports. It doesn't satisfy only one or two sports. So in total, when we look at the rental fee for our rinks, taking care of our golf course fees, our bowling fees, you're looking at those top three are the place where that district-sponsored team is playing. So we're seeking and hoping that that can be put back and reinstated. Of course, the next piece would be fully funding our gymnastics program, which we've had excellent growth. We had a very solid year. We're excited about the future of our gymnastics program, and we want to continue to build that. We're looking to reinstate, again, assistant coaches and to extend supervision, so again, we can work more with our athletes. And the total there, you see, is $46,700 of reinstatements. With that, we would love to be able to make some additions to our program as well. And as I've mentioned in the previous slide, we would be reinstating one assistant coach for one of these teams, whether it be boy or girl. And we would be looking to add a second, so that, in that way, both boys and girls indoor winter track and field would have a head coach and two assistants. Again, the numbers are, definitely warrant them. The unique nature of winter indoor track, we primarily are at Union College and at State University of New York at Albany, large areas with many events going on at the same time. So it's a, it's really not only an instructional piece, but it even assists us with the supervision, you know, of our student athletes. The next program is one that Bethlehem did not take part in. We did not participate last year, when it was a pilot program. We were one of three districts in the suburban council that wanted to see how the program unfolded before we ventured in. And the response from the other schools that took part in it, in addition to half a dozen other schools, has been incredibly positive, incredibly rewarding. For those of you, some of you may have heard about it, basically, the quick summary of Unified Sports is, it is a Special Olympics-registered program that goes hand in hand with Section 2. And basically, we would have student athletes who are intellectually disabled, they are special education students, they would be paired up with regular education students in a very competitive field. There are different levels of competition. There's a higher level of competition, the division that we would be choosing for this spring, which we are entering at this spring for the first time as a pilot, would be a mixed division, where boys and girls, coed division, boys and girls can play together. The non-special education students and the special education students are going to be of equal, approximately equal athletic ability. There are five people on the court at all times, of course. Three of the five must be student athletes with learning disabilities, the other two would be regular education. They would have a coach. It would fall under Section 2, showing that it is genuine, authentic competition. They, we have a, there is a culminating tournament back in May, after they play six contests, and they begin practicing in April. For many students, this is an experience that is once in a lifetime. They will never be on a competitive type of team representing their school district. And again, the conversation I've had with my peers is one that just is extremely rewarding, and they all feel is the best thing that they have been able to enhance their programs with. So that would be, again, you see two programs there, the $10,500 figure is for a boys' program and a girls' program. In addition, the suburban council is now looking to expand into a modified boys' volley program. Currently, there are none. There is a partial grant that would be associated with the schools of $750 that would contribute to the costs, which is being donated by USA Volleyball. And as many of you know, our boys' volleyball program is currently the strongest double A program in the suburban council. We are one of the strongest in the section by far, and we are one of the strongest in the state, as our boys have gone to the state final four for the last four years. I had the privilege of attending in Glens Falls. Luckily, the wall didn't collapse back in the fall, as it did today a little bit. But an incredible opportunity, incredible program that we've developed over the years. And now, having a modified program to join and company the junior varsity, and of course, ultimately, the varsity, will continue to keep Bethlehem's male volleyball players, hopefully, at the top of the conference, the top of the competition. I haven't heard this, but I guarantee you, that's something that some of the schools that are tired of losing to us during sectionals are pushing for. I've actually, this is actually true, I've actually heard that Shenandoah is behind having the modified boys' program in place. They are pushing it hard. They've, we've beaten them the last three years in the section finals. The athletic trainer electric golf cart. Our, both of the golf carts we have are extremely old. They are both in excess of 25 years old. We have one that was purchased by the football boosters a number of years ago. It's a long, flat bed, and the football team, football program uses it to bring water out to the fields. If a student athlete is injured, and where they're bringing it to the, bringing the injured athlete to the trainer, the trainer may be several fields away, dealing with soccer, we're dealing with tennis, or any number of other programs that we're running in the fall. That's one of the reasons why, obviously, our football program has one. We have a second one that the trainer currently uses, that more frequently is breaking down. There were three days this fall where we did not have a golf cart for the athletic trainer. So he had the defibrillator on his person, strapped to him, and would have to go wherever he needed to go, which greatly concerned me, because again, of the large expanse of our campus, if there was an issue at a field far away, that's going to severely impact how he can assess and assist. Clearly, those days, you know, we had our cars, he and I at varied places, so we can properly address any safety needs. But that, but a reliable, working cart with a flatbed in the back, again, for water, to transport injured athletes, is something that's, that's a safety issue. It's vital. You see uniforms, and you may, those who heard me last year, talk about our uniform budget code. Our uniforms, over the last bunch of years, that particular code has been basically under budgeted for, I would say. Our booster clubs have done a tremendous job in helping maintain Bethlehem's appearance on the fields. However, it's not just our varsity teams that need uniforms. Our junior varsity teams are in need, our freshman teams are in need, our modified teams are probably in the most need of anybody. And with that increase, we can really start putting all of our programs on that five-to-six year cycle, depending on the physicality of the sport, where our programs are constantly on that cycle. That's where you want to be. That's where you want to be. We don't want to have to have our boosters basically bail us out, you know, when our uniforms become, you know, less and less appropriate. Additional equipment. We are in dire need of field hockey goals. We are looking to, which are quite expensive, we are looking to, basically, more maintenance of existing equipment that we have. We are looking at providing our modified athletic program with more equipment as well in our football and baseball programs. And again, it's something that coaches have been asking for, and we've been unable to assist. And finally, supplies and conferences. The vast majority of that would be supplies, and that would be, again, to be able to fulfill the full needs of the athletic program. Again, supplies that are currently being picked up by boosters, supplies that I'll ask coaches, how badly do you really need it? Do you need these pole vaults? Or do you need those starting blocks? Or do you need, you know, we have to, you know, obviously, with any budget process. And that's been going on over years, and eventually, you do need those pole vaults, as an example. And the conferences would be professional development for coaches, to bring in speakers. We are looking to do basically a coaches seminar for our own coaches next year where we can bring in some outstanding speakers that have been utilized throughout the suburban council this year and really try to enhance their approach to our student athletes. So in addition, that would be $66,000 of additions. In total, when you look at the $11,400 reduction from the elimination of freshman football, remember, that does not count the one coaches stipend that would be moved over to the junior varsity. The reinstatements, $46,700, and the addition list gives us a net change of $101,300. Any questions?
Any board members have any questions?
So out of the recommended reinstatements and additions, what would you list as safety items?
On the reinstatement list, if I had to choose strictly on what would be considered safety items, I would say the two at the bottom are the most, no, maybe the three, actually. The last three, I would say, are probably the biggest safety issues, and I'll explain. Obviously, when you have the word supervision in there, having better supervision, better training for our athletes, working with weightlifting and strengthening equipment, that's something that you want to have people who really know what they're doing. The reinstatement of the assistant coach for indoor track, for sure. Again, the winter track and field season is extremely unique, while the spring season also has extremely large numbers. Where in outdoor places, it's much easier for the coaches, while not easy, it is easier for them to be able to manage. And those indoor facilities where the vast majority of our indoor track at Union College and SUNY Albany, many times, as an example, SUNY Albany will have certain pieces of the competition going on in the air structure, while in the gymnasium, there are others. And obviously, a coach can only be in one place physically. So when you're dealing with 90 to 100 student athletes per male and female team, that extra supervision and instruction is huge. And fully funding the gymnastics program will also allow us to have, gymnastics equipment is extremely expensive, and we want to make sure we always have the top-of-the-line equipment on that piece. We really do, while it's been budgeted, we have had a very difficult time finding our varsity head coach and assistant, so we really do need to find that assistant coach, which would, of course, be covered in funding that program to better supervise our gymnast, which, again, very, very difficult sport, safety-wise.
And then in the additions, would it just be the electric golf cart?
Probably additional coach. Again, the additional coach at the top right, as well as the golf cart, if we're strictly speaking about safety, yes.
So you'd be talking two coaches?
Right. One would be reinstated, and one would be an addition. So that way, both the boys and the girls would each have three coaches in total for the winter indoor season.
Was there an uptick in students participating in indoor track this year?
No. The participation has remained extremely high for all the years. Several years ago, when it was eliminated, it was a budget cut, and our track and field booster clubs were able to pay for the additional coaches that were eliminated, and they no longer can fiscally afford to pay for them.
And my last question is on Slide 18 and 19. 18 has 1777 student athletes, and I'm not sure if this is for the full year. And then on Slide 19, the total at the bottom is 1439 for the three sports. Is one just a different season?
Yeah. If you look, we have some projections in there. The spring is always projected, and there's usually a couple hundred variants, because obviously, the spring season's coming up. So we base it on, you know, sometimes you have ebbs and flows.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. Do we have a girls' modified volleyball team?
Great question, and I appreciate you mentioning that because I wanted to mention it earlier. Currently, what we have as of now, and what we've had historically, is a varsity program, a junior varsity program, and a freshman program. In the fall, Coach Niffen, at the time, was our coach, and Coach and I had talked about possibly reallocating, still keeping three levels, but possibly going with a modified junior varsity, varsity model rather than freshman JV varsity. And the reason for that is, again, it's a 7-12 presence, you know, in that program. And when looking at our fall offerings for young ladies at the middle school, we do not have very many at all. We have field hockey and soccer, unless a young lady is, you know, an elite athlete who can be selectively classified, which, of course, that process has become exponentially more rigorous. So now, by offering a modified, changing that to modified girls' volleyball, we'll be able to have another offering for our young ladies, make a 7 through 12 presence in that program. And we feel, including Coach Wood, who's just recently been named our girls' varsity coach, have a more comprehensive program. So now, that would mean that both, if the boys' program went through, we would have both a modified JV varsity for the girls and for the boys.
So by adding the boys' modified program, that would be a three-level?
Correct.
And so both boys and girls would have three levels of volleyball?
Correct. Currently, the boys only have two.
Okay, got it. I really do support the coach training. I know as we move forward with your work in the district, I would support something continuing and growing so that coaches get up-to-date information on their particular sports, on youth athlete issues. That's something I'm particularly interested in. And I would recommend that as we go forward, not tonight, and as we get additional information from the state and other sources about what our budget numbers will actually be, that I would like to prioritize list of some of this. All of it, actually, prioritize. I'm not asking you for tonight, but at some point, can you please prioritize this? Thank you.
Joanne?
Thanks. That was good presentation. The one thing I would say that I think is really remarkable, and you alluded to this, is that while, you know, we have, what, just under 1,000 single-sport athletes, so, you know, 1,000 kids participating, I've had a number of parents from other school districts remark about really the culture that has developed over the years at Bethlehem in other students who are not student athletes, but they're spectators, that get so involved in spectating. And it's not just at, you know, the boys' basketball game or the, you know, the hockey game. And, you know, those are big crowds at those games, girls' basketball. I mean, we have crowds at volleyball games. We have crowds at lacrosse games. I mean, it's really remarkable, the level of what I would call kind of the nurturing of school culture that Bethlehem has been able to do. I mean, the battle of the fans, you had the Hooligans who, on their own, kind of, you know, set something in motion that was all about being a great fan and showing sportsmanship and really trying to model behavior. And I think that makes Bethlehem really special, and I think the more we can do to encourage that, you know, just because you're not playing on the field, you know, you're part of this too, because it's not the same experience for the athlete when there's nobody in the stands or nobody in the crowd kind of watching. And I think that really makes for an experience that really the whole student body is experiencing. And that's a great thing, and that's very, very special. So the more we can encourage that. So whatever you're doing, keep at it. I think it's also great that we, excuse me, routinely have, you know, members of the board, we have, even if you don't have kids, showing up at events, we have administrators, we have, you know, you, Tom. I mean, I don't know how some of you guys do it with your home calendar by the number of sporting events, that you're showing your support, and that's really appreciated. I'm glad to see, as a booster, I'm a very active booster parent in gymnastics and hockey, also lacrosse. There's lots of my compadres out in the audience. I'm glad to see that we're trying to do something about what has become a huge burden for the booster clubs. The booster clubs I'm involved in, it's like strategic planning to raise revenue to, you know, to just cover the ice time or cover the greens fees or, you know, pay for half the program. That's a big burden that the boosters have really stepped up and taken on. But it does call the question of, you know, if we're going to, as a district, say that we are supporting Bethlehem Central teams, then, you know, in my mind, there's a certain responsibility that goes along with that. And I also do wonder that the booster parents have really taken on such a role that I wonder if parents that can't do that role are sort of discouraging their kids from participating. I mean, hockey in particular, it's a big check that you have to write in the beginning of the season. If you are a parent of a kid, it's already an expensive sport, and you are thinking about writing a big check that, you know, you have to sell raffle tickets that comes on top of other expenses, I wonder if that is an implicit sort of discouraging factor. We are a public school. We shouldn't have, you know, the pay-to-play atmosphere in any of our sports. We should find ways to make them available for everybody. So I'm glad to see some of that. I know it's a big, big burden for some of these booster clubs along the way. And I also am glad, especially on the track and field, that we're finally addressing the numbers issue. We got a letter, the board got a letter from the booster club of track and field, you know, making the argument, look, we have a lot of kids. We don't make cuts. And it's a great thing that we don't make cuts because it allows more kids to participate, but we've got to staff that. So I think that's a really good thing. And I look forward to, you know, as the budget picture gets clearer, trying to figure out what's real, what's not. You know, this is a nice list, and it's nice to be able to make a list, but we're at step one, and we have many steps to go down. But thank you for your presentation.
Christine, did you have another comment?
Quick question. What does, what sports does the athletic trainer service?
At the high school. It's based on the training room is in the high school right next to the help office. And we have a room at 2:30, but he arrives and is packed in the middle of the season. So, yeah, every sport, male, female.
Great. Thanks.
And I do have a question, Lynn, on some of the recommended reinstatements, because I know we've made additional cuts to the various programs in terms of competition, and I know some of the programs pay for their buses now because we cut back to only suburban council competition and stuff like that. So I'd really like to see what we're still having other booster clubs pay and get an assessment of those type of costs. I know, I believe, like, for wrestling, they pay for their own tournaments and stuff, and they're required to have so many matches in order to move on for sectional play. So there's some additional costs, I think, that I'd like to see, at least assess what the boosters are paying that really are mandated for the participation of the student athletes.
We have, we have, although I can get you those figures, we have all those figures by sport. And in addition, I'll show you, under supplies and conferences, is, part of supplies is fees induced and things of that nature. So built into that would be things such as some of the wrestling tournaments that are currently being picked up by booster cheerleading competitions, because it's a sport now, it's not a club any longer, track and field. So, and I can get you that to the penny, the transportation cost.
That would be good. I think that would be important to put that in there as an item, so we, you know, fully understand what we're trying to push back.
Another question. Great report. Really appreciate your presentation. Just want to point out the reinstatement of the ice hockey rental fee. We've never paid for that. So it's not really a reinstatement. I don't think...
Sure we did.
Are you sure?
It got taken out of the budget the year before I became president of the boosters.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about that. Because we started as a totally self-funded sport, so, I mean, the whole sport was paid for by the boosters. Now, I'm glad to see this, but I, you know, that some of this coming back, if we can do that, coming back into the program, because I do agree, there's some things that we shouldn't be requiring, you know, that, whether it's pay-to-play or whatever. And the same thing is true in the academic area, that, you know, we shouldn't be expecting parents to pick up the burden, or teachers themselves on their supplies in their classroom either. I mean, that should be provided through the budget process. So, yeah, if we can do this, you know, I hope that we have...
The unknown if.
I will mention, I think, the big if is if, and we may have to do this in stages. We may be able to do it all together. I mean, to some extent, some of what is being reinstated was, things were cut. And so then the district engaged in negotiations about, okay, if you pay half, we'll pay half. So, I mean, to some extent, it, there were programs that could have been cut and that weren't. So this has a long history in the budget. So, again, it may be stage integration or reintegration of funds, or maybe all, I don't know. The other thing I will say is, and both my kids are in track and field, is at some point, I will be looking to the district for some kind of recommendation on that kind of a team. It's not up on your three levels. An unlimited open program is not up there in terms of the philosophy that you showed initially. And I'm not sure how other district, I want, that would be the question. I would like information on how other districts handle their track and field programs. And to what extent would the district support an unlimited, I'm not recommending one way or the other. I want information on a quote, "no-cut" sport that's funded entirely by the district.
I can actually answer that. The entire suburban council track and field programs are all, all of them are no-cut. And interestingly, what they do is, and that's the beauty of track and field, it's not subjective. It's timed, that's this height, it's that speed. And that's why coaches love it, quite frankly. And coaches themselves, all the coaches, not just Bethlehem's, they basically designate, if you're this time or lower, you're a varsity runner. If you're this time or lower, you're a junior varsity runner. And they even go as far as freshmen. And in fact, Bethlehem the last two years has volunteered to host our freshman, you know, championships for the suburban council. While there's no official separate coaches, Coach Howley and Coach Schreiner and their staff oversee all the levels, they do have it designated. It's very organized.
Okay. And I can appreciate that because I've got a kid who played basketball since third grade, and she's moving up slowly, but she also started track last year as an eighth grader and made one of those top teams. So, I mean, it is a kind of a sport that if you have ability and you have drive and dedication, you can proceed quickly.
Definitely.
You don't, you would never do that. You can't start eighth-grade basketball and make it onto a JV team. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board members, any question?
I just have a quick, easy question. You mentioned that our fall teams had the designation of the 90 and above. What about our winter teams?
They are actually in the process.
Okay. Okay. So your omission is not admitting that they're...
The quarter descended.
Okay. Yeah.
It's in January.
Right, right, right. No, I assumed it was a timing issue, but I just didn't want to assume.
It'll take a while. I will keep you guys posted.
Okay. Great. Okay. At this time, and Ken, Lynn, if you could just stay around too. I don't know if you're planning leaving, just in case any other comments. At this time, we would recognize any visitors who would like to address or make a comment to the board on any agenda item.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, Kathy.
Well, that reason's ageless, but...
My apologies, everybody.
And as you settle, Ms. Johnson, please forgive me for walking in. I will tell you, we appreciate everybody being here, but at the town hall, it is literally...
I can't hear him. Is it like a...
I did get a chance, just so... The board knows that they will be postponing any future meeting until National Grid meets with the board, so that is scheduled for the 18th. But at the end, we'll probably need to just confirm that we're going to need a bigger room. So, I'll say, Kathy?
I'll say.
And my apologies, Ms. Johnson, again.
That's okay. That's okay. Always tricky to follow the athletics department, but like Lynn, I have... Always tricky to follow the athletics department, but like Lynn, I have to say that I am thrilled that I'm getting to showcase the special education department, because I'm absolutely thrilled to represent them, and I feel like we have a great, great department. So I'm going to start with our guiding principles that keep us going every day. The SES department, as we are known now, is committed to providing a full continuum of high-quality services to our students to enable them to reach their full potential. We believe students learn best when they're served through a cooperative effort with their teachers, the principals, support staff, and, most importantly, their families. Individual education programs are developed for each of our students to help them succeed and ultimately become a contributing member of the community. This is a picture that, for people who have been here in previous years, you've seen before, this represents our continuum of services. I always talk about the continuum of services. If you look at that arrow, starting on the left is what we call least restrictive, going to the right, which is most restrictive. So related services, a student could have just one service of speech once or twice a week, would be least restrictive, and then the most restrictive being a self-contained classroom, or even more than that, an out-of-district placement. Along that continuum, important to notice, note the numbers in special education. So at this point, right now in the year, we have 711 students identified K-12 or K-21 in our program. And in that number of 711, it includes students with an IEP, students that have a 504, an accommodation plan, or students who are declassified and have a D-class plan. So I wanted to show you what our numbers are looking like by level, because that's an important part. If you look at that graph, the blue represents the current school year we're in, and the red represents the predictions for our students for next year. As we always say, we expect that the greatest number of students served would be at the elementary level, and right now, that's about 265 students. The hope is that with early intervention, students will need less support as they move on in the years. So you see, from the elementary level on the left to the middle school, the numbers drop. And that's the same thing that usually happens at the high school. We have seen, you'll see that red bar under high school, there's a bit of an uptick. For the last three years, we've had larger cohorts of students moving from the middle school up to the high school. So we're really quite full at the high school, and a big part of our planning and projections for next year are around how we're going to service these students at the high school level. So now we get into our expenditures. If you look at our entire department, we basically break down into four departments. Special education, our teachers, our related service, paraprofessionals, our health services department, our psych services, and then our social work services. All of those things that you see up there, really, those costs are related to salaries. And overall, that's $11,800,000. So breaking them out into expenditures by type, obviously, the largest grouping there is our salaries at $8,570,000. That is 72% of our total budget. The next is our tuition paid to other schools. I talked to you about the continuum. Our goal is always to have the majority of our students serviced here in Bethlehem Central, but there's always going to be students and needs that would require an out-of-district placement. First, we always go to BOSI's, which is going to be the next line item, but we also have a number of our students that are serviced in schools where we have kids with pretty significant needs. So those are schools like Wildwood, the Center for Disability Services, and those costs are pretty flat from last year to this year. Our BOSI's costs are up, as they have been, as you've been watching these presentations from other departments. Those are for students who are in full programs, as well as the BOSI services that we have in districts, such as teachers of the visually impaired, teachers of the hearing impaired, that we bring into our schools here in Bethlehem. And then our other operating costs, those are things like our consulting fees and significant materials that are used for students with disabilities. So overall, there's that $11 million that we talked about earlier. Now I'm going to break it out into our salaries and our positions. So we have 38 special education teachers. That number's been consistent for the last few years. And any of the increases you see there on any of these positions really have to do with our contractual increases for both the BCTA and BCUEA. We have 12 speech pathologists that work with all of our district and even some of our out-of-district students. We have 95 aides to students with disabilities for board members and the community who have been kind of following special ed for the last few years. As you know, four years ago, we had a pretty significant reduction in that number. I'm really proud of our staff and administration who have helped us really keep that number pretty consistent. It might go up one or two over the last few years, but that number's been pretty level. Next on that, the next line item is my position, as well as the three CSC chairs who supervise and set up programs for all of our students. Just as a note there, it's four FTEs, but 0.6 of that is paid out of our federal grant. And the last slide this evening, I'm going to talk about the grant a little bit. Next line item is our OTs and PTs that service district-wide. We have two physical therapists and four occupational therapists that are a big part of our programs and helping us be able to keep students in district. And then the final line there is our clerical staff in the special ed department. I want to note there that there are six employees, but it is actually 4.8 FTEs. And there's a little reduction in that amount due to breakage from our retirement this year. So the $6,771,000 is the total there. Continuing with positions and salaries, we have 11 nurses for the district. And I wanted to indicate there that, you know, there's the increase, which 2.4 of that is a salary increase. But we did something a little different this year, the board allowed us to do, which we included, did an MOA this year, and included some additional monies for the nurses so that they would have the ability to get to do more of the screenings and physicals on students. So that's been really helpful, and that's, was an additional $20,000 that was included in there. We have two clericals at the nurses' office, one at the middle school, one at the high school. Their salaries are represented there. Seven psychologists district-wide, again, those are salaries listed there. Seven social workers district-wide. The next line is substitutes, extra help, and overtime. Those substitutes and the extra help and overtime is really included in there because of the training that we need to do for our staff, as well as CSC meetings. In special education, there are regular CSC meetings, and mandated members are required to be at them, so we really build in some substitute costs there. The next line item is one that you probably haven't seen much of in previous budget presentations over the last few weeks, but certainly brand-new in our budget, and that's a health insurance buyout of $70,000. In the new BCUEA contract, there was a piece for health insurance buyouts. And up until this point in the year, we've had about 18 members of the BCUEA use the health insurance buyout. So they are paid not to have the health insurance. And we have another 12 members, I think it is, 18 members, excuse me, that are, have indicated that they will be using that. So while you see that cost on my line, there is actually a significant reduction in health insurance costs when you look at the overall budget for the district. So that's a pretty exciting piece. And again, the overall cost there is $1,799,000. So, a little different than the previous presenter, where you were looking at, you know, some additions and some kind of reductions. I wanted to talk a bit about something that's a little different in my department and, as well as a few other departments in the district. But special education department gets something called IDEA federal funds. We've been getting those for years, and they are exceptionally helpful. As you can see, for the, it takes a little while for us to get those numbers up, so we're at, I'm showing the 1213 and the 1314. And it's a pretty significant amount of money. What's important to note is, over the last few years, that number's actually gone down significantly. What we use that money for primarily is student-specific needs. We use a significant amount of that money to purchase a lot of the technology that we use for our students with disabilities. You know, we have rooms with full laptops, iPads. The software that we use for our students is pretty significant. So that's what we use that money for primarily. But we have funded some positions through that. This year, we're funding six FTEs, but again, it's not six full-time people, it's, you know, 0.2 here, 0.4 there. What I really want folks to know is that, as that money is going down, we still need to make sure that we have those positions. So I've been really careful to look at our federal funds and make sure that we're using it more for equipment and less for people. With that being said, I'm trying to get people ready for the fact that I've got an uptick in numbers at the high school, more programs that need to be planned for. And while we're managing things tightly through our, through the budget and through federal funds, I fully believe that I'll be standing here and asking for some different things next year. So I'm giving a preset, as we do for all of our students in special education. You get a one-year preset on me asking for a little bit more assistance. So that is what's going on in special ed, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question on slide 31. In the clerical line, some, even though, even if it's really a 4.8 FTE, some people could read that as a large number of clerical folks in your, is that, are they all in the central office?
They're all in the special education office.
Central office, yeah. Could you just give us a sense of the amount of record-keeping, or what those folks all, why do you need almost close to five clerical folks?
Absolutely. In special education, every single student has a minimum of one meeting a year that's called an annual review meeting. But in order to get into special education, there's evaluations to be done, there's constant processing of documents for students. It's, you know, everything is done in conjunction with our legal counsel. An IEP is a legal document, notifications are legal documents, and there's really very, very careful record-keeping that needs to be done.
Great. I wasn't questioning the number, but I just wanted to do a bit more kind of community education on why that number is what it is. Thank you.
Sure.
Question, but I just wanted to say that I'm thrilled with what you and your staff have been doing with the special ed program. We've come a long way over the last few years, and you have my appreciation.
Thank you. Actually, I do have a question. Given the last presentation, and if in fact there is these new sports teams coming in, what, if anything, will your department have to do or staff with athletics if there's a, I forget what the name of the uniform, would you have to be, for example, providing aids during those contests if a student who needed an aid was participating in that sport? I don't know if you've thought that far ahead, I'm just...
Where's Lynn?
Where's Lynn? You know, we spent...
I'm curious. I think, I think he just left.
We spent a great amount of time talking about the teams, and it will be brand-new to us. You know, we've gone out and looked at other schools who are, have started the unified sports, and it still is an athletic sport. So, you know, a student that needs a one-on-one aid, for example, might not be participating in the sports that we've got coming up right now. You know, right now, the funding for that was really about a coach, and I don't anticipate what we're planning, at least in the early stages, that aids would be part of that.
Okay, so there will be no impact on your budget?
No.
For that particular program? Okay, thank you.
Would you be able to put a estimate together for next year if we're thinking that you're going to need additional funding for next year?
Immediately, right now?
Not right this second, no. In the future?
Yeah. What I'll always say about special education is the numbers aren't always black and white. What I can say is that, based on our students in the younger grade levels, knowing that they've been in types of programs, and now those programs are moving to the high school, I anticipate needing two different types of programs at the high school and perhaps one at the elementary level. Black and white, that sounds like three staff people, but it doesn't work that cleanly because in those programs, everything is approved through SED, and it will say like a 1213 classroom or 1214. So it's the number of students, a teacher, the number of paraprofessionals, and then the related services that go along with that. So I haven't figured that, all of that out. And creating new programs sometimes has students leave one type of program and go into another. So a lot of times, there's the shuffling of, they were here, but now they're going to go there. So, you know, I know in general what I believe program models will look like, but exact numbers, I don't really have at this point.
Anyone else? Yes, Lynn?
Kathy, would you say that the cutbacks in federal funding are a result of sequestration? In other words, when Congress just crossed the board, slashed all funding, you know, a lot of programs got hurt by that. Would you say that, you know, because...
If you look, Lynn, at, whoops, at any of the federal funding that we're getting, every one of them has dropped. It's not just the IDEA.
And I know in the funds I deal with, some titles that used to exist no longer even exist anymore. There used to be Title IV, and those things have just been dropped.
And Lynn, remember that this was actually before my time, but I benefited from it as an employee here, is we had the ARA funds, which were significant, which is a big, big way that we were able to start getting a lot of our technology in special education. And those were there for a short period of time and then faded, so...
Well, the reason I mention it, not just because we're not getting it, but again, if there's an opportunity to, I know we're pushing more for advocating at the state level and trying to determine what budget we're going to come up with, but certainly at the federal level, it wouldn't hurt to do some advocating there also, you know, first for Congress actually to do something, and then, and to, you know, fully fund these programs, especially for special ed. It's something that we, that we push for every year, you know, for IDEA funds especially. And again, if any community people can help by contacting a congressman and senator, I think that'd be helpful, too.
Can I just also give an appreciation, both for the presentation, but also for the nature of your budget? Because on August 15, someone can move in with a family of two, three more children who will need services, or someone will leave the district. And so I realize your numbers shift and change in ways that I don't think many other programs do, so...
That's true. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Are you doing the next slide? Yep, yeah.
You can advance to the next slide. I just wanted to mention, one of the things that we've been talking about, when we look at our fund balance, we look at some of the restricted components that are part of the fund balance. As you know, we're very prescribed with what we are allowed to have or not have. There's another type of reserve that we can have, which is called a capital reserve fund. And what this does is it allows you to set aside any surpluses that you have in a given year and put into this capital reserve that you can then use for future capital projects. And you can use it as a source of funding for your local share to cover the costs that are not covered from the state's reimbursement. For instance, you might not want it to exceed more than a 10-year period. You have to specify a dollar maximum, and it can only be spent with board approval and with voter approval on specific projects going forward. So it just becomes another one of those tools where if you happen to have a year where you've come in significantly under budget, you have a place where you can set aside those funds to help you cover some significant costs in the future. It would also, to create this, you need to have it appear on the ballot, and it would need to pass by a simple majority of the community as well. So if that is something that you are interested in, we would need to take a vote on that at the next meeting on March 18th, which would then include it in the legal ad, which you would also adopt at the next meeting. And then it would appear on the ballot on May 19th, and then if approved, it could exist. We might not have any funding come the end of this year. Again, it would be something that you would look at each year as you're closing out your books and seeing where we've landed with our results.
Does it have to be approved each year?
No, it needs to be approved initially upon creation, and then the only other voter approval and board action would be when you were spending money out of the reserve.
And is, no, is there like a timeframe when you have to spend it by, or can it be in there?
Within that specified time period. So again, you're setting it up. So for instance, we might say it could not exceed more than $10 million, and it wouldn't exist for more than a 10-year period.
But to your, your question is, say during that 10-year period, the district has been able to put into reserve, say, 1 million to, 1.2 million dollars, and there isn't a project ready, you can then go to the voters and ask them to reauthorize another 10-year period for that same amount of money. You just have to always get permission to create, reauthorize, and expend from that account.
If, once you put the money in the account, can you ever take it out in case of an emergency if there was a lack of funding?
No. It's specifically for capital.
It's restricted.
Considering the history of the past several years, though, you know, thinking in terms of surplus, it's hard to believe that we'd actually be considering that. But what would be the advantage of doing this over just having your allowable fund balance? Because if we're putting money into here and we don't have the, you know, full 4% in fund balance, which can be used for emergencies, I mean, what, what would be that advantage then?
And this really isn't intended for emergencies. This fits with what we've talked about in terms of operations and maintenance, our five-year facility plan. We know that our various structures and equipment only last for so long. So this would be anticipating that next capital project and give us that funding. In terms of the unrestricted portion of the fund balance, we're very limited on how much we can have in there, and we've been just under the 4% mark. So it really wouldn't take a large surplus to potentially put us above that. So again, this just gives us another tool where we can legally and appropriately set aside these funds for a valid public purpose that's approved in the future.
And would, is that aidable? Like I know that.
Your capital projects, you still would need to go through the formal state ed submission and approval of the projects, and then anything that they have approved is subject to the aid at the applicable ratio.
Yeah, in other words, the money that you use, say you had an approved project that authorized withdrawal of the amount of funds, that fund would be aidable on the aidability of the project. So it's really a capital construction savings account, which we know we're going to have. And what I would say to Ms. Lenhardt's question is, one of the advantages is that if we do realize unforeseen surpluses to help in our capital planning down the road, if we had something to relieve the burden on the property tax base because we're able to fund it through our good fiscal stewardship, that's a major advantage to the community. Would it probably cover everything? No, but like using our last capital project of 21 million, if we had a million that we could use, the 40% that we would have to use out of that 21 million or $8 million that we would go to our public for, now, if we had another million, now we're only going to our public for 7 million instead because we're funding part of it through their own budgetary process, which reduces their taxability load.
But we still have to get their approval?
And we'd still have to get their approval.
Now, what happens that we don't get the approval?
Well, then you wouldn't be able to do the project either.
Right.
But the money stays in the account.
Right. Yeah, so they never lose. It's like, yeah, that savings.
But if you want to do another one, do you have to wait the whole next year for the may vote, or can you do an approval?
No, the vote can be at any time authorizing a capital project.
It would have an impact upon our debt ratio also, potentially, which, you know, we always try to keep an eye on that.
Right. So how would we determine, if we at the end of a year have money that is going into either this or the regular fund balance, so how would we determine kind of the split?
I would do an analysis of, here is what our total fund balance.
Right.
Each of the reserves, as you recall, whether it's the workers' comp reserve, tax surchiary, we're looking at the underlying data that justifies how much you should have in that reserve. So you're looking at what's available in your unrestricted. You want to manage that as well in addition to all of those other reserves. So at the end of the year, I would come before the board and say, here's what we're looking at currently, and here is the recommendation for what should be transferred.
Similar like last year, we had a concern with the tax surchiary because of the reassessment project. That we came back with some recommendations to our ERS as well as our tax surchiary, and I do believe there was one other, I think unemployment or something, but each one of those was approved by the board so that we were below our 4% threshold on our unreserved, undesignated. But we also took any potential surplus. And we've been, you know, when I first started, that surplus was up in the upper, upper million and a half because of what the district was doing. We've been cutting it closer and closer to a balanced budget at the end of the year that last year, I think it was around 700 to $500,000, oh, that's what it was. There was an amount for the sale of 90 items that we had to locate that had to be separated.
That's the mandatory.
But our amount at the end has narrowed down that we're almost running a balanced budget, even in spending at the end of the year.
Ideally, we'd break even every year, but there's a lot of moving parts, so.
Judy, I don't think we'd ever be in this situation, but you said that we have to determine what the maximum we want to have in it. But is there a maximum that we can exceed that's imposed upon us?
Not by statute, no. It's whatever you feel is a reasonable. It's going to vary based on the size of the district, so you'd want to look at what are the size of your projects. And when we came off a $93 million project, we're looking at a $20 million project, so to the extent we're talking about 10 million, that's.
And if a small amount was, you know, available at the end of the year, I mean, could you put in a small amount, like 10,000?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so you're not restricted.
You could put in $1 if you wanted. But you could never put in, this isn't going to happen, but say we had $11 million at the end of one year, you could only put in, if this was authorized by the voters, 10 million. The other million, we'd probably get cited by the comptroller or have to put it in a different reserve. Now, of course, that's, high as the sky, that isn't going to happen. We would all love that, but it would not happen.
I mean, do you see any downside to it?
No.
No, okay. Except for the fact, even if you wanted to take $1 out, you would have to go to the voters. $1 can go in, but nothing can come out without there.
But it's not like.
It brings me to a question. If, if the board were to move forward this, how many things would be on the ballot this spring?
This would be the.
Would this be the fourth item? We've got the budget.
Well, you have the district budget, you have the district board, you have the bus proposition, you would have this reserve, and then you also have the library budget and the library trustee, so.
There would be one official addition from what we normally would have.
Yeah.
All right, well, so everybody think about it, and we'll have a discussion at the next meeting. You can put it on as an agenda item for us to have an open discussion about it.
We'll prepare the notice.
Thank you. And then last slide is just the schedule of future meetings so that you can track what's next. Our next meeting will be Ms. Monroe presenting on the K-12 instructional program. I'll give you the quick recap of everything that we've covered thus far. I do not anticipate having any breaking news on revenues at that point either, but I can hope. If we do, you will hear about it.
Yeah, and just adding on that with the 18th, we were going to do after the instructional piece, sort of the wrap-up of what have been the impact of our past budgets on some of our decisions, as well as what are some positives that we've been seeing through our budgetary process or that we see going forward. We're going to ask the board that we'll move that to the start of the meeting on March 31st because I have a feeling the 18th, the budget presentation will be the shortest part of the evening.
Just, can I just clarify, what is the latest date we have to adopt the budget? Is it the 21st?
The latest date is the 21st.
But not the legal ad, that's the 18th.
Right, 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 right.
It'll be interesting because March 31st meeting, hopefully we'll be getting an announcement that the budget's done, but we only can hope.
Any other questions for? Thank you very much, Judy. Kathy again. All right, now we can move on. At this point, the board would recognize any visitors who would like to make a comment to the, to the board. If you do, please come up to the microphone in the middle, state your name, as we are being tele, videotaped for later television play of that meeting.
It's adjustable, or you can take it right off, yeah.
Advice is take it off, it's easier.
My name is Jill Doyle. I have three students in the district. I have a sixth grader, an eighth grader, and my 12, 10th grade son here, they're all boys. I wanted to speak on behalf of the Bethlehem Swimming and Diving Booster Club regarding Agenda Item 8 Finance Action Item D Award of the Contract to Roche Brothers for the 2014-15 Capital Outlay Project. I first wanted to thank the Board of Ed to let them know that I truly appreciate the district's support for the capital outlay projects. Last summer, in addition to the start of the pool column reconstruction, the pool ceiling was painted. I believe the painting the ceiling not only brightened the space, but provided a safer pool for the athletes as well. Tonight, there's an Agenda Item regarding further construction at the pool. I wanted to let the board know that the district has not asked the athletes or the booster club for input regarding how, I wrote this all down so I wouldn't, to determine what the priorities of the pool should be. In addition, it is unfortunate that the capital outlay funds have needed to be used for the past two years in order to continue the pool column reconstruction. It has been consistently expressed to me that the pool did not need to be included in the district's last building bond. However, it appears as if the bulk of the capital funds designated for what has been referred to as cosmetic issues continues to focus on a structural problem. I would kindly ask the board to carefully review the scope of the project scheduled for the pool. According to the bid proposal, the district is planning on spending $22,980 on signage and acoustic paneling. It is the opinion of this swim mom that the paneling will be of little, I'm still shaking, benefit to the exceptional athletes that use that facility. In addition, in my email correspondence with the boy's varsity coach, his priorities for the pool were as follows: securing and fixing the loose and crooked starting blocks, servicing or replacing the springboard, and repairing chipped or missing tile work, all of which he feels are potentially safety concerns for the pool in the future. From my final point, I would ask the board to encourage the district to seek the guidance of the coaches, athletes, and booster clubs when making decisions regarding specialty areas in our building. If anybody has any questions, too, Connor is here. So if there's any questions regarding the pool, I'm not an athlete, but he is, and he can answer them for you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to make a comment? No? Okay. Going on, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through D. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? I will just say that I believe Greg Nolte, our operations and maintenance, a person had, you know, would have thoroughly gone through the whole bid process in determining what the needs were, what the district has decided to do, in consultation with our athletic director. I'm sure he would have been involved in any type of decisions on any enhancements we would make to any facility.
Hey guys, is these, some of these repairs are based on the bond, the most recent bond, is that correct?
These repairs on the capital outlay were discussed in the last budget season, and they conformed to what was presented to the public as well as to the board. The bond itself, there's a couple of components with pools as well as the energy performance contract. And some things were taking, taken out of the $21 million bond because we were going to use the capital outlay to try to address some more emergent. This probably would have been phase one of last year's, but we had the emergent issue of the columns that Greg had to modify the plan as an emergency reason with state ed.
I know our construction manager's here, so.
Yes. They weren't involved with it at that point, so.
I do remember, I think several of us board members went in and saw the corrosion of the structural beams and that had to take some emergency action to be corrected for safety reasons.
Ideally, we were hoping to have the energy performance for this summer. Unfortunately, the district cannot be responsible for the fact that state ed is no longer replacing its workforce, and they have moved from a six to nine-week backlog to over 52 weeks. So we're at the mercy of state ed.
Can we ask for, either the athletic director or Greg, about those items that were just discussed that potentially could be safety issues?
They are in, actually, the capital outlay for this budget.
Oh, okay.
But they are not, they have not risen to the detriment or an emergency level. These are our, our devices. I mean, we have ADA issues that you have to take care of once you address them, and that is part of his proposal, I believe, for next year, which I think is the diving boards, the ADA lift, and I believe the starting blocks.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Item number nine, professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through F.
Some of second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Item number 10, support personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action item A.
Some of second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Item number 11, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action item A.
Some of second.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? Item number 11, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action item A, in which is first reading of several policies.
Some moved. Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
It's first reading, so we don't take action.
Can't hear you. I said it's first reading, so we don't take action on the first reading.
But anyone have any comments on what had been presented?
I just know that Mike and I are on the policy committee as is, I believe, Joanne, are you? No, who is it? Christine, okay. And we work with Dr. Douglas, and I think we've met at least three times on these policies, but you know, if anyone has any feedback, but I know that we've been very careful on correcting any text issues or lack of clarity issues, so.
Okay, so we do not need to vote on that. Item number 12, recognition of visitors. At this time, any visitor who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item is free to do so, and if so, please state your name. No? Okay, good. I think we'll get under the nine o'clock for the participation government students. Future meeting and events. We have, our next meeting will be here, March 18th. We anticipate at 6 o'clock executive session with a regular board meeting after that at 7:00. We may need to change our location, right?
We may need, yeah. I would, I would probably already recommend that we move to the cafeteria for that presentation.
Okay. Agree in favor of that. We'll move to the cafeteria for that meeting. The next meeting after that will be Tuesday, March 31st. That would be the normal first Wednesday of the month. However, Wednesday, April 1st, is the annual BOSI's meeting that most of us will be attending. So we've rescheduled that to Tuesday, March 31st.
And if I may add, that may be the action night for the ZBA on April 1st, so please mark your calendars on that, just in case.
All right, and that.
That's the, I'm sorry, that's the Wednesday?
That would be that Wednesday. So just be prepared. I don't know if that will be the date, but they run pretty much consistently with our schedule. That would be, I believe, their next meeting day.
Well, what I could do is I'm not going to the BOSI's meeting, so I'll be in town, so I can always cover that one.
The next meeting after that is scheduled for Wednesday, April 15th. Make sure everybody has your taxes done by then. Now, with a 6:00 PM executive session and then a 7:00 PM regular board meeting with a budget discussion, yeah, and that's tentative. And then also, the annual vote is on May 19th. Will be our annual budget vote, possibly voting on a bus proposition, we'll make that determination next week. And then there also are two seats that are up for Board of Education, and then also there's a library vote, and I believe some library board of trustees seats available, We, we'll be going back, the board itself will be going back in to discuss the personnel contract into executive session. We do not anticipate making any decisions. Do I have a motion to do that?
Some moved.
First and second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, we will go into exec session. We adjourn the meeting, no, we can't adjourn yet, but this, pick students can come up and sign out.
And you can leave, sign and leave. You can all go home. This goes around to the staff.